Well, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the School Board Meeting of Independent School District 271. Today is Monday, November 13th, 2017, 7:00 PM. We are at the Arlene Bush Boardroom. All board members are present. Please remove your caps and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, which stands for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As approval of the agenda, can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll move on. Item four, canvas of school board election results.
Mr. Chair.
Whereas the School Board of Independent School District 271 has canvassed the election returns, therefore be it resolved, the School Board hereby declares the following. One, it is hereby found, determined, and declared that the special election of the voters of the school district held on November 7th, 2017 was in all respects duly and legally called and held. Two, as specified in the attached abstract in return of votes cast at said election, a total of 14,029 voters of the school district voted on the question of revoking existing operating referendum authorization, approving new authorization, school district ballot question one, operating referendum. 9,503 votes, yes. 4,205 votes, no. 320 undervotes, one undervote. Said propositions, having received the approval of at least the majority of such votes, are hereby declared to have passed.
Second.
Rod, we can eat odds.
This is just the process that we need to do after an election for the board to approve the results and then to finalize it to be able to put it in our levy for this current year.
And I should do a proper introduction for those that do not know. This is Rod Ziffkovich, our Executive Director of Finance and Support Services. Any questions? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes, and that'll bring us to number two.
That's you, buddy.
Whereas the School Board of Independent School District 271 has canvassed the election returns, therefore be it resolved that the School Board hereby declares the following candidates elected to four-year terms beginning January 1st, 2018. Beth Beebe, Tom Bennett, Jim Sorum, and Don Steigoff. And clerk of said board is instructed to notify the candidates according to law.
Second.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Again, it's just the process that we need to follow after the election, four-year or every two years of election of school board members.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Then bring us to number five, recognition of students, staff, and public. And up first, we have the American Education Week proclamation. Who'd like to read that one?
Mr. Chair. Resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approved the attached proclamation proclaiming November 13th through 17th, 2017 as American Indian Education Week in the Bloomington Public Schools.
Second.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I may, it's actually American Education Week. If I could amend it to reflect that.
Do we miss that?
I read it wrong.
So, is that, shoot, I lost it.
I don't know what it means. What he's talking about.
I just want to amend that, did it reflect as American Education Week?
I read it wrong, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Okay, sure. So, I don't think we have to vote on that, we're just clarifying what the proclamation was.
Yes, I misspoke.
Okay, thank you. And the proclamation, I'll read it here, American Education Week, November 13th through 17th, 2017. Whereas throughout American history, schools have helped democratize our nation, strengthen our communities, and widen opportunities for all people. And whereas by integrating different groups throughout, through commonly shared values, schools prepared this nation's diverse population to live harmoniously in a democratic society. And whereas for generations, our schools have answered the call to develop and challenge the future leaders of our families, our communities, and our nation. And whereas there's no greater legacy than the sound education of our children and the continuing education of our adults. Now therefore, we, members of the Bloomington School Board, proclaim in the Bloomington Public Schools that November 13th through 17th, 2017 be observed as the 96th anniversary of American Education Week. So that's the proclamation. Is there any conversation? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'll have Eric Melby, our Assistant Superintendent, receive his proclamation and maybe say a few words.
Sure.
Congratulations. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair Oliva, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the board, just for the rather significant in-house crowd tonight, and for those watching at home, a little bit of history on American Education Week. 96 years ago, the National Education Association got together with the American Legion, actually, they were concerned about the fact that World War I draftees, a rather large percentage of them unfortunately had a hard time reading and weren't always physically fit and ready for duty. And so, they got together and through their organizations wanted to recognize American Education Week. And I'll read just a little bit of a quote when they did their initial proclamation 96 years ago, as Chair Oliva noted. The purpose was for informing the public of the accomplishments and needs of public schools and to secure the cooperation and support of the public in meeting those needs. And that began National Education Week. Over the years, a number of other organizations have signed on to support National Education Week, like the Department of Education from the federal level, the National PTA, the American Legion Auxiliary, Association of School Administrators, School Boards Association. There's quite a lengthy list of professional organizations who also support, just making folks aware of American Education Week and how important education is. From my perspective, as the Assistant Superintendent here, you know, I'd just like to publicly state how proud I am to work in a community like Bloomington that does support our schools. You just heard about the canvassing of the votes, and that is an example of Bloomington supporting its schools. We in the school district are always striving and looking for ways to involve folks in the school district, whether that's through volunteers, or serving on committees, or parents, or PTA, or whatever that looks like. I also want to publicly thank our teachers and other staff in the school who work very hard every day with our students and families to provide the best education possible. And, yeah, I think I'll end with that, and a final, again, just thank you to the community of Bloomington for supporting education, supporting our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the next one, Chemical Health Week proclamation.
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 proclaims the week of November 13th to November 17th, 2017 as Chemical Health Week in Bloomington Public Schools.
Second.
Okay. And here's proclamation. Bloomington Public Schools Chemical Health Week, November 13th through 17th, 2017. Whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in the United States severely affects individuals, families, schools, and communities. And whereas the color red has been chosen to represent individual and community commitment efforts to reduce alcohol and other drug abuse in our community, and whereas business, government, law enforcement, schools, religious institutions, service organizations, neighborhoods, youth, senior citizens, and other individuals are encouraged to demonstrate their commitment to helping reduce and prevent alcohol and other drug abuse by wearing and/or displaying the color red during Chemical Health Week, and wearing and/or displaying a red ribbon. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Bloomington Public Schools does hereby declare November 13th through 17th, 2017 Chemical Health Week in Bloomington Public Schools, and encourages its students, staff, and families to participate in drug prevention education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. Be it further resolved that the School Board encourages all students, staff, and parents to support alcohol and other drug abuse prevention efforts year-round, dated this 13th, today of November 2017. Any discussion? All those in favor of this proclamation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we have Andy Kubis, Executive Director of Learning Supports, to accept the proclamation. Congratulations. Thank you.
Can I say a few words, sir?
Thank you.
Chair Oliva, Superintendent Fujitaki, viewing public, and as the Assistant Superintendent said, our in-house crowd, just want to say a couple of words about Bloomington Public Schools Chemical Health Week. You've heard me say this before, that every week is Chemical Health Week in the Bloomington Public Schools. We do a great job here in our schools, the teachers, the counselors, the social workers, the psychologists, everybody, working with kids to help them make good decisions every single day. And this is the week where we get to honor that, show our support by wearing red, but partner with our city and our police force, as you mentioned, to make sure that kids have good choices, and that we put them in position to make good choices. And again, we get to do that this week, we get to show people that we're really committed to this. So, I appreciate accepting this on behalf of the school system, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And the trimester is coming to a close, which means we have a house full of seniors that need to get in their government class requirements. So, as I read this, if you are senior here for your government class, I'll have you come up to the podium and just stand here, ready to say your name and your teacher's name. So, come on up, start walking. Don't be scared. A requirement of our 12th grade government classes is to observe a governmental meeting of some sort, things that they may attend, our city council meetings, school board meetings, courtroom proceedings, et cetera. The Social Studies Curriculum Guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. So, if you'd like to just say your name, I believe you're all Jefferson students, so just say your name, your teacher's name.
My name is Mohammed Alif Mondal, and my government teacher is Mr. Storlein from Jefferson High School.
Right.
My name's Makaya, and my teacher is Mr. Storlein.
My name's Bridget Ainis, my teacher is Mr. Storlein as well.
My name's Erin Mainz, and my teacher is Mr. Storlein as well. Sophie Ainis and Mr. Storlein.
My name is Cole McClure, and my teacher is Mr. Storlein.
My name is Annie Fow, my teacher is Storlein.
Hello, my name is Anton Burton, my teacher is Ms. Dahl Wyland.
My name is RJ Arpin, and my teacher is Ms. Dahl Wyland.
My name's Ellen, and Mr. Storlein.
My name's Adam, and I have Mr. Storlein.
My name is Noah Tran, and I have Ms. Dahl Wyland.
My name is Logan Redding, and I have Ms. Dahl Wyland.
My name's Alec, and I have Ms. Dahl Wyland.
My name's Emma Ogdal, and I have Ms. Dahl Wyland.
My name's Rachel Graff, and my teacher is Ms. Dahl Wyland.
My name's Peter Kirchner, and I have Mr. Storlein.
My name is Keegan, and I have Ms. Dahl Wyland.
My name is Margarito, and I have Mr. Storlein.
My name is Ashley Hodgson, and I have Mr. Storlein.
My name is Rachel Walton, and my teacher is Ms. Dahl Wyland.
My name's Haley, and I'm Mr. Storlein.
My name is Benjamin Anderson, and I have Mr. Storlein.
My name is Faith, and I'm in Dahl Wyland's class.
My name is Shania, and I have Mr. Storlein.
My name is Monica Cursey, and my teacher is Mrs. Storlein.
Well, thank you for being here, and at the close of the session, or after one hour, whichever is shorter, you can ask for a signature on the agenda from any one of our administrative cabinet members sitting over here on the side. And if you don't have an agenda, it's that green piece of paper sitting over there by the coffee machine. And...
Mr. Chair.
That brings... Yes?
I just want to raise a point here on your canvas of the election results. Wasn't sure if you approved the recap as stated there, or you misunderstood, or maybe I misunderstood the question, and we just glossed over that. But in that resolution, it lists the vote totals.
Okay.
And we just have to approve those. If we didn't do that, it would not...
How we did that? I thought we did, we can do it again.
Well, I wasn't sure. Somebody asked me if you had to read them, and I said no. You don't have to read them, but you do have to approve them as a...
It's printed, it's printed?
It's written, because the poll does not say aloud.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's each vote. So how should we proceed? Should I just make a motion to accept the...
Can we amend?
Accept the resolution.
Accept the resolution.
As written, and you can do a roll call vote, and that would...
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the resolution as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. And so, just to be clear, we're doing this because we didn't actually read all the vote totals in there, but we still have to accept...
You don't have to read the vote totals, but you do...
We have to accept the vote totals. Okay, so we're accepting the vote totals by doing this. So we'll start here with...
Aye.
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 Believe that satisfies?
Be overly cautious, but...
Okay. Thank you. And I believe the last thing in this section would be to ask, is there anyone who wishes to address the school board on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? We didn't have anyone sign up. Seeing no one come forward, we will move on. And the next part is our Part A, which includes board business, minutes, personnel actions, pathways, advisory committee membership, field trip approvals, agreements, and contracts. And I get a motion to approve Part A of our agenda as stated in our packet.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And that means we're moving on to Part B, and I'll call on John Weiser for our enrollment report for 2017.
Let's see if the report comes up magically. Kind of magically. Good evening, Chair Oliva, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. I'm here tonight to present the 2017 enrollment report. I come annually with this report out of the Technology and Information Services Department. Purpose of this report is to put in plain language a description of our district, the K-12 part of our district. The audience is mostly a public audience. We publish it to our website in places where the public can see it. I'll just say anecdotally, this is the piece of data that I most frequently send on when I get a request about our school district from outside, also internally, because it's written in a way, we stripped out all of the education speak, and it's written in a way that it answers about 90% of the questions that a lot of our constituents have about Bloomington Public Schools. So I'm going to take about 15 minutes of your time to walk you through some of the highlights. There's a lot of numbers, a lot of data. It's not my intent to walk through all of that, just to point out a highlight or two, and then give you some time to ask questions. I always start by thanking Alyssa Miller. Alyssa is our Mars Coordinator, works out of my department, interfaces between us and the Department of Education in understanding how reporting works, attendance reporting, and all types of reporting, official state reporting. And so we greatly appreciate her effort and her attention to detail in getting the numbers What I suggest every time I come here with this report is a couple of things. Number one, if you have just a limited capacity for digging into data about our district, this I think is the place you should always start, and it has a couple of key facts that if you want to have them on the top of your head without having to pull up a computer, I think what the data is contained here. Number one, this report says that we're a 10,143 student district. This is the place where that number comes from, where we say we're a 10,000 student district, or we're at risk of falling below a 10,000, becoming a 10,000 student district. So you'll hear me say about half a dozen times tonight, we're a 10,143 student district. This is also the report that you'll see on one of the pages that says that we're a 50% ethnically diverse district. We turned over in this last year from being 49% to 50%, it comes out of this report. It also, another key piece of data is that we're 40% free and reduced lunch eligible district. So we moved from 40% to 41%. So, if you got to remember, if you have to have a couple of key facts in your head, those are three of them that are kind of interesting. As I said, we published this report online, all the past reports are there. I sometimes have suggested that you sit with a glass of wine and compare last year's report to this year's report, if you so want.
But only if you're over 21, not for the seniors that are watching in the audience.
Yes.
So we're clear. Covering ourselves, right?
I'm going to jump you forward to page four, spend a little bit of time here. On page four, on the top in that light purple graph, you get an overview of the district. Very quickly, I'll walk through the columns. Column one is where we were at this time last year, October 1. We look at that first week in October, and we take a snapshot at that single moment in time. The value of doing that at the same time every year is we have students who come and students who go, and some of our numbers trend up as the year goes on and some trend down. If we take a snapshot every year, we can do some things around program evaluation with Dr. Heistad, or with staffing, with Director Ziffkovich, based on that growth or shrinking of different parts of the organization. The first column is where we were last year, 10,149 students. The second column is our actuals from this year, October 1, 10,143 students. The projection, which, again, Rod Ziffkovich in his office uses census data and some formulas to project forward how many students we'll have, that staffing is based on that number, budgets are based on that number. Last spring, that number that was projected was 10,065 students. Second to the last column there shows that the difference in that projection was 78 students. So you could say it was 78 students under, being under is good, that means we had 78 more students than we were predicting come into the district. And again, budgets were based on that 10,065. As a percentage-wise, that's less than 1%, so kudos to Rod's office for that. And then difference from last year is that last column, we're down six students. The middle section is that same breakdown, you recognize those same columns only for each of our elementaries. You might, if you're attached to one of our elementaries in particular, just follow one elementary throughout this whole document, that kind of gives you a sense of how things are flowing here, because then it's just repeated for the other schools. The only thing I would note about that second middle table there is it has the SUN program in it. For three years, we had the SUN program, which stands for Students with Unique Needs, located at Olson Middle School. That program has been redistributed into schools. It was about 25 students, you can see there, it was 23 students last year. It's now embedded in a couple of middle schools, or a couple of elementaries and a middle school, and so those numbers are now absorbed as well. We're showing last year's numbers here, so they all round out and match. Same set of columns for the secondaries on that bottom table there. The only thing I would note there is that the secondaries is where we got the bulk of those surprise students, 68 students in the very lower right column there. 68 extra students showed up at our middles and high schools over what was projected. If you turn to page five, page five shows a breakdown by class, so you can, again, if you picked your favorite school, you might look at the size of the kindergarten class versus the third grade class versus the fifth grade class. It might be interesting to note that we make a little bit of a jump when we move from fifth grade to sixth grade, the size of the fifth grade class jumps by about 30 or so students to sixth grade class. Again, there's a jump in the transition between eighth and ninth grade. Those are normal jumps, they happen at transition points for families, and we pick up a few students there. Our senior class this year, as of October 1st, is exactly 800 students. I'm going to look at page six for a minute, and then page seven, eight, and nine kind of replicate the same data, or seven and eight, I should say, replicate the same data. So I'll spend a little bit longer on page six. In page six, you can see in the top left corner, again, our enrollment of 10,143 students. You can probably say it with me now, huh? Below that is different sort of demographic breakdowns. So first by gender, then there's a block of data in that 10,143 column that shows the five federally defined ethnic breakdowns, and then percentages of each, or numbers of each, I should say, and then showing that our ethnic diversity percentage is now 50%. If you go over to the second column, you see the same breakdowns for elementaries. You can see we're slightly more ethnically diverse in our elementary schools as a composite, middle schools at 51%, and 47% at our high schools. That's a trend we've seen for years, that wave of diversity coming through our district has always made our elementaries higher than the average, and our high schools lower than that average. The next set of data across the middle there is English learners, and as a percentage, we're 13% of our students in K-12 are English learners. That's up a percent over last year, so trending upwards a little bit. You can see there, again, it's skewed more toward the elementary cohort. The primary reason for that is you can graduate out of EL services, and so when students come to us early, by the time they get to middle or high school, they're starting to graduate out of those services, that causes a lot of that shift in numbers. The next area of data there is free and reduced lunch status, and again, 41% of our students qualify for free and reduced lunch. That's up a percentage over last year. Later in this report, you can see the trends by school, and then the tenure trend on free and reduced lunch status. Next to the bottom set of data there is special ed. 14% of our population is special ed. That's up 2% over last year. And the last set, those last three lines are non-resident students. 7% of our students come from primary addresses outside of Bloomington. I'll preempt the question, because I get asked this almost every year. We bring in more students into our district than leave, than choose to go to Richfield Public Schools, Redina Public Schools, or Minneapolis Public Schools. So, we tend to, we draw 7% of our population in from other cities, and we lose a certain percent who make other choices, but we end up on the positive side of that balance. Pages seven and eight are, again, more detailed, school by school, so you can look at all that same layout, same breakdowns, same common language, based on whatever school you want to look at. Take an elementary, for instance, and compare it to another elementary that you're attached to. Page eight does the same for our middles and high schools. And then on page nine and 10, what we try to do here is take some of that demographic data and put it into a graphical format. So, my attempt here is to take three things that we often look at educational data, we look through the lens of. When you look at a school, you might look at things like, what are some of the extra challenges that school has, or some of the, and these indicators sometimes have extra challenges that school has, or some of the, and these indicators sometimes have extra staffing attached to them or different funding sources. So we take the three pieces of data, the free and reduced lunch eligibility of a school as a percentage, and the EL percentage, or the English learner percentage, and the special ed percentage. Again, all three of those have specific programs around them, like title or EL programming or special ed program. If you add those three demographics together, you get this demographic index. If we were examining from Dr. Heistad's, one of his many reports, if we were examining the MCA results or the MAP results of a school, we might look at this demographic index and look at the, how a school like Washburn or Indian Mounds or Valley View might have a different set of demographic challenges than a Ridgeview or Hillcrest or Olson Elementary. It's a helpful way of graphically looking at that demographic data. Slide 10 takes the ethnic diversity data and just puts it in a pie graph. Again, we are a 50 percent ethnically diverse district. Compared to last year, the, the segment for Asian, Asian Pacific Islander and white went down by a percent each, and the slices that grew were the green slice labeled black and the Hispanic ethnic diversity area. Each grew by 1 percent. Second half of the report is about historic trends. So you've seen the bulk of the data there. If we looked a little bit over time, we try to put a couple of those pieces of data in 10-year look backs. Starting with slide 12, you see the last 10 years of enrollment. This graph has zoomed in a little bit. It's got the, it, it shows the span from 9,000 to 11,000. If you zoomed out to show from 0 to 11,000, it would, it would look pretty flat because we have, as a district, been very stable in our enrollment. The difference between 10 years ago in the nine, eight, nine, 2008, 2009 school year to today, that difference is only 64 students. We've had a little bit of ups and we've had some downs, but it's, it's really only been 64 students over that period of time. I'll talk a little bit about slide 13, and then 14, 15, and 16 are detailed views of that. This is the trend over time of the last 10 years of our ethnic diversity numbers, those numbers you've seen. As I said, we're a 50 percent ethnically diverse district, and that's grown a little bit over time. So over the last 10 years, we were at 38 percent in that measure, now we're at 50 percent. You can tell it's gone up a percent or a percent and a half per year. On slide 14 is the breakout of that ethnic diversity by elementary school. If you look, if you're looking at one of these breakouts, you might notice a couple of things. One is there was some, there are some jaggedness in some of those graphs. That can be due to program shifts. It can be due to boundary changes. That 11, 12 school year, where you can see some movement, there was a boundary change in that school year, and it's probably reflected in this data. There's a small peak here of three dots between 2014 and 2016, 17. That's that SUN program again. It's about 25 students. They were considered a school in and of themselves with their own school number and demographic information, so that's why they, they're on this chart, and they'll move one year down each year. And I'll explain that peak each year. If we go forward to page 17, this is the last set of graphs, and it's about the free and reduced lunch eligibility data. So there you can see the 10-year trend. If you, if this were a five-year graph, you'd see it as very flat. We've been very stable around free and reduced lunch status the last five years, going up a percent, going down a percent. Going back 10 years, you see a little more volatility there, back to 32 percent back in 2008, 2009, but we've been very stable over the last five years. The data on 18, pages 18, 19, and 20 kind of show a similar, similar picture, school by school. Most schools, if you look over that trajectory, show a little bit of growth, but in the last few years have been pretty stable. So that is the 2017 enrollment report. I send this report out to principals and site leads, our cabinet. We take a little bit of time to talk about it in as many places as we can because, again, we think it's important. We think it's sort of the first, the first data you might consider when you're looking at our district, and so we try to keep it as alive as possible throughout the year. What questions might you have?
Well, first of all, thank you for the report. This is always one of my, my favorite reports of the year that I look forward to, and you did a great job as always.
Use this to my ears. Favorite report of the year.
Yeah. Since it's like the fourth one I've seen, I don't have a lot of questions. My, my only question, I think, is a, I'm looking at the, the trends here, and we have a reduction in elementary and high school, but then we have a 110 increase in middle school? I don't know if your, your data won't dug it deep enough to see if there's any trends as to why that's happening?
Enrollment?
Yeah, enrollment.
I don't know that we know exactly why that. We did notice that there was, that there's an uptick in our element, or in our middle schools, and we also noticed there's a shift where Valley View Middle School, it was basically, Olson was our largest school, Oak Grove was our middle, middle in size, and then Valley View Middle School was our smallest. Now Valley View and Oak Grove have switched positions, so Valley View is actually gaining enrollment, which is a great sign. We don't know where those 100, 100 students are coming from. We do know that the fifth grade class going into sixth grade was larger. It was one of those little bubbles, and so that's going to account for a lot of that.
Okay. And also another interesting, I was looking at, looking at our high schools, typically last several years, the, the Jefferson class have been much bigger than, than Kennedy, and this year for 12th graders, it's still a little bit bigger, but if you're looking like 11th, 10th, and 9th, they're getting much more closer in size, like difference of seven students, so. More balanced in numbers, it looks like.
Yeah, that's true, that's true as well. We have noticed our two high schools have gotten closer in terms of population. Our Assistant Superintendent's Office manages the, the enrollment, the in-district enrollment. I know they've done a lot of work to keep to board policy of keeping schools in balance.
It's good.
And so you might see some of that reflected there. I think people are also choosing to stay with their neighborhood schools.
Yeah, and I'm also excited to see that Indian Mounds enrollment is up, and that's a great school, and there's just great things there. It's good to see that more families are locking into that school. All right, that's all I got.
Who else has questions?
So how many kids do we have then? I, I don't think I caught that during the report.
A little over 10,000. 143 over.
Oh, 143. Must've missed that. Yeah. Was that at the beginning? I'm not sure. Anybody else?
Will you forget now though?
He's counting the days.
All right. Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And I guess that will bring us to reauthorized conversion of voter-approved referendum authority, the board-approved authority. Who'd like to grab this one?
I'll take it. Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the reauthorization of converting $300 per adjusted pupil unit of referendum authority from voter-approved to board-approved for five years, starting with paid 2019 levy. This conversion will be reflected on the district's levy certificate.
Second.
Remotion, second.
Chair Olivas, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. This was a resolution that originally came about, about five years ago when the legislature allowed school districts to move $300, up to $300 of their voter-approved referendum to a board-approved referendum. It's, it's not new money, it's not additional money more than what we approved by the voters. All it is, is just moving it from one section of the levy certificate to another levy, part of the levy certificate. We thought it might be a good idea to do it at this point in time, based on the passage of the referendum, and tie it to, you know, for the next five years, and then after that five-year period, we'll come back to the board again with the renewal for the, for the remaining five years of this 10-year referendum that we, the voters approved.
So is money spent differently? Does it go into a different bucket? Where does it go to?
No, it just, it's, it's just classification within. So instead of being under, truly under referendum, becomes under the category of equity and other.
Okay. To just be clear, it's not like it's new money, like we can raise 300 more dollars?
No.
Okay.
It's all, it's all the same bucket of money that was just approved.
Okay. I think voters probably just want to know that, or they're going to put more money now? So just make sure that we're clear that it's not any addition to what we've already done.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
And I'll turn it over to our superintendent, Wes Fujitaki, to give us an update on the world's best, world's best workforce annual meeting.
Great, great. Thank you. Last week, the school board and administration met to prep for the upcoming world's best workforce meeting. State law requires all school boards to hold this annual meeting with the public. Administration started the preparation by reviewing with our board our district's strategic plan and our PGP plans, and their, and these plans alignment and compliance with applicable state law. Administration then presented and the board discussed our 1617 pathways to graduation milestone metric results and other metric results. Administration then presented and the board discussed our 1718 plans to improve our performance with respect to these metrics. Since that meeting, administration has been studying the board's comments and questions from that meeting and is incorporating them into our district's annual report. Administration will be sharing that annual report with the public at an upcoming edition of the school pages. That publication will be sent home later this month. This annual report will be presented at the upcoming world's best workforce meeting. As part of this preparation process, our board studied one of their major responsibilities to establish and keep current a strategic plan. The board's studying focused on the strategic plan's vision, statement, and the strategic directions. The strategic plan was refreshed three years ago. Over the years, our strategic plan progresses toward our vision, therefore our strategic vision becomes more focused. Therefore, the board discussed sharpening our vision with more concise descriptive language in that strategic plan. Since we're closer to the vision, we can come up with more concise language. Further, as the vision becomes sharper, so do our strategic directions. Again, the board and administration is discussing more strategic, focused strategic direction language. Based on this work, our school board will continue discussing these proposals to refresh and update our strategic plan's visions and strategic direction language, and will be doing this at an upcoming meeting, or meetings. The annual world's best workforce meeting will be held on December 11th at 6:00 PM here in this room. So that shows what we did at the last retreat. Thank you. Any questions?
What was the date that we're having the meeting here again?
December 11th at 6:00 PM.
Let's open to the public.
Yes, it's, it's a public meeting.
Prior to the regularly scheduled board meeting, correct?
Yes.
So there'll be a board meeting at 7:00 that evening. So that'll bring us to board member reports. Who'd like to start us off this evening? Director Burshon?
I don't mind going first. All right, I had, I had an opportunity to serve lunch over at Ridgeview Elementary. It's a lot of fun to, to see the staff, to see the kids come through. It's, when I served, it was first week in November, and the staff already knew all the names of the students. They already knew all of the dietary requirements. No, no, this one doesn't get milk, they get juice, or this one doesn't get peanut butter, or they, they have this allergy, they have that. And they knew all the kids' preferences, and it's the first week in November. So it's just, it's just a treat, first of all, to serve, but it's, it's really fun. It's really neat to see how active and engaged the food service folks are, helping out these, these kiddos when they come through the lunch line, and gently suggesting that maybe they want to try some beans, or maybe they want to try some broccoli, or maybe they want to try this or that, something that maybe they hadn't thought of trying. And they do, they do an excellent job, so it's, it's just always fun to get in there and, and see that. Had an opportunity for 917 to have a board meeting, we were down at Hastings Juvenile Center. For those of you that don't know, that is a, that's a lockup, that's a secure facility. Our, our board met down there, we, I think we do that once every two or three years, and we toured the facility, and this particular time, we had a student who's in that program as our tour guide, and he did, he did a fabulous job. He went through and showed us all the classrooms. His favorite teacher was there, and, and he was just sort of gushing over, over how she helped him turn his, turn his attitude around. So the students that are in this particular program are generally 18 or under. They may linger for a month or two after 18, but 18 or under. So that, that's always an interesting, an interesting opportunity. Also had the opportunity to go over to Kennedy the other morning for National Signing Day. There were three students that signed letters of intent to attend different colleges. A real big congratulations to the students and to their family members for, for being there with them through their journey. These kids were all excited to go to the different places they were going to go. There were two, two young ladies and one, one gentleman. Made it over to the PTSA monthly meeting, that was over at Jefferson. I'd like to extend a word of thanks to all the PTA personnel in the individual schools. This particular monthly meeting is a group of all of the individual school leaders, the PTA leaders. They'll meet together and they'll go over some new information that the, perhaps that the district is, is, is presenting. Superintendent is usually there, does a presentation. Different cabinet members are there and do different presentations along the way. But once again, I want to say thank you to all the volunteers that make up our, our very robust PTA programs. We, we just could not be what we are without them. And last but not least, for my particular report, many thanks to all our voters for their overwhelming support for our referendum. And then that will end my report this evening.
Thank you. Would you like to go next?
Sure.
Director Sagoff?
Yes, I attended the Early Learning Services Parent Advisory Executive Council meeting, and then I also, that group had a movie night at Pond, so I stopped by the movie night. I had a chance to go to the Lights On at Washburn for the Kid Safari After School Program. I made school visits to Valley View Middle School, Normandale Hills Elementary, and Southwood. At Southwood, it was a great experience to see, as I mentioned before, Frazier now has a classroom there, and so there were now some of our students going into the Frazier classroom, so hearing very good reports from our staff in that building on the great relationship that's working there and how well it's working, so I was very happy to hear that. I also had a chance to attend the flag raising at Normandale Hills, their PTA meeting, and the Normandale Hills Celebration. They were recognized as a school of excellence recently, so that was a great celebration and, you know, really great for the school to receive that recognition. And I also would like to say thank you not only to the voters for the referendum, but also to the volunteers that volunteered on the Vote Yes Committee throughout the community and met at 7 o'clock every Wednesday morning this fall. And so thank you to everyone that put their effort in, and then each, each, you know, community around the schools were holding meetings also, so thank you to everyone that put that effort in. Thank you.
Would you go next?
Okay. So in my report, I'll be reading a little, a little part of this, but on October 27 and 28, I had the opportunity to travel to New Mexico to join other Latino elected officials from the Midwest and Southwest, so there was a total of 60 of us getting together as part of the National Association of Latino Elected Officials Regional Governance Policy Institute. And so the main topic of this two-day conference was around the Every Student Succeeds Act law. So I'll read to you just a little part of what this was about. This is part of the, the press release. As the implementation and monitoring of ESAs state accountability plans take place, school board members will need to exercise their leadership and governance skills as collective boards to develop good public policy to better shape the educational experiences that students and families receive in their communities. To address topics related to this timely issue, Naleo Educational Fund brought together members and other, state representatives, school board members, community college trustees, municipal level officials from 11 states throughout the mid, the Southwest and Midwest for a two-day institute. Through the institute, we had the opportunity to network with fellow colleagues and experts from throughout the state and the country, receive timely information, and exchange legislative policies and ideas around the most effective ways to address the most pressing educational issues for their local school districts. Then after that, on November 3rd, I attended, at the end of that week, I attended the Association of Metropolitan School District's meeting, and this meeting, the topic for this was a of Metropolitan School District's meeting, and this meeting, the topic for this one happened to be the same, once again, the Every Student Succeeds Act. And so we got a report while we were there, also Commissioner Casellius was present, and Department of Education, they gave a, a little presentation about this. But all this just around the importance of us, school board members, to keep a, kind of keep a close eye on what's happening and how this develops, and how the plans that come from the Department of Education develop, and how and what we're going to do to follow this law, and how we're going to be implementing those policies in the way that is the best possible way for our students and our families. So just a call to really be present and really be aware of this issue, and really go through the law over and over again so that we can understand what's happening, especially since we know that there's really not going to be money coming from the state this coming year, and also that we are not getting enough support from, from the federal government, especially around EL program, special education, and other, other programs, but especially those two. And so just, let's keep an eye on that. Then tomorrow, the, the committee, the Legislative Advisory Committee for the board will be getting together, and that's going to be at 6:00 in the afternoon, Room 610A, and there's going to be some legislators who will be present, that will be attending the meeting, so if any of you is interested in attending the meeting, they're going to be there. You say tomorrow?
Wednesday.
Is it? Tomorrow is Tuesday, sorry. That's, yeah, that's Wednesday. Okay. And then on Thursday, our Legislative Committee for the board will be getting together also to talk about our Bloomington Advocacy Advisory Committee, and then just kind to talk about next steps regarding our committee, and then talking a little bit about our platform, but the actual meeting to set, kind of go over the priorities of the district regarding the legislative platform will be taking place on the meeting in a couple of weeks from now, so that will be Thursday, November 30, I believe, at 4:00 in the afternoon. So that's our next meeting. And that means that around December, we'll be bringing a platform for the board to consider, to consider for, for your approval. So that's all I have right now. Thank you.
You don't have anything?
I attended the flag raising over at Westwood Elementary, so I'd like to thank Principal Roberts and the staff there for being able to usher all of those elementary students out there quickly in the cold, so they weren't freezing. I'd like to thank all of our veterans who have served, and all those enlisted members who continue to serve, and for those who helped facilitate that. I know that the people who did the, the flag raising at our school, they were part of a group that went to several schools, and I believe this was maybe the third one that they attended, and I could see that their hands were frozen, but they, you know, held it together and just, you know, made it happen. So it was so nice to be there and, and see all the kids there and the whole school recite the Pledge of Allegiance for them. It was, it was actually kind of emotional for me, because I have a nephew that's now a Marine, and so these types of events really, they hit home more. As a student, I never saw it, but yeah. I would like to thank the community for, once again, supporting our school district by voting yes for the referendum and providing us funding for the next 10 years, or additional funding, I suppose, should say, for the next 10 years. I'd also like to congratulate my fellow board members for being re-elected to the board, and thank, and congratulate Mrs. Beth Beebe for also being elected, and for all those who ran, it takes a lot to, I mean, it takes $2 to put your name on the ballot. It takes a lot of courage to go stand in front of the entire city and say what you believe and what you would like to do for the, for the students, and, and step up to commit to four years of service to this community. And so for those that weren't elected this time, I would encourage them all to stay involved, and, you know, if you had, if you really wanted to participate, two weeks ago, two weeks from now, we have plenty of committees, plenty of things that you could continue to do. So, that being said, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Burson.
Great, thank you. I have three items. First is that I've begun discussions with the city manager about scheduling a joint city council school board meeting, probably the beginning of the next calendar year. Second thing is that I'm scheduling, scheduling individual meetings with the newly-elected city council members. And third is I am on the Chamber, Bloomington Chamber of Commerce Board, and it's going to be my pleasure tomorrow morning to introduce our Executive Director of Learning Support, Andy Kubis, and our PGP developer, Cheryl Martin, and they're going to be giving a presentation to the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce Board on our personal growth plan. And that concludes my report.
Okay. That's just the Chamber Executive Committee?
That's the Chamber Board of Directors.
Board of Directors, not full of the board, okay. Is there any other business to come before the board?
Well, the students have another four minutes, so I think we should just sit here and wait. I'll call this meeting adjourned, thank you.